At this time, I will reconvene into open session, this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on January 12th, 2023, beginning at 6:36. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website, One or more of the trustees may participate in the meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the administration building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone, and thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speakers when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by the security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we must insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will... Before we do that, I want to welcome everyone that's here, everyone that's watching online. Welcome to our very first board meeting of 2023. It's hard to say 23. I hope everyone's New Year has started out healthy and happy, and I hope your New Year will continue as such. Please, we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join David Willbanks in leading us in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now, if you will please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is programs and presentations. Ms. Foster?
President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, everyone watching online in this huge crowd that is with us in person tonight. We have an incredible treat for you as we have a group of elementary school students from a variety of schools. The kids that are here tonight are from Blanton, Butler, Farrell, and Johns Elementary Schools. Y'all can give them a shout for your school. Yes. The reason that they're here tonight is because on Monday, they're going to do the final performance of the Youth Extravaganza at the MLK Four Day Celebration that happens every year here in Arlington. And they will not be alone. This is just a small sampling. They will be joined by hundreds of other kiddos from those schools that will all be at the extravaganza together performing. They work on this at their schools, but they also do other events during the year, too. For example, over the summer, they worked together on the... Let's see, what was our summer one? In June, the Juneteenth Celebration. They worked on that with the MLK Committee. And y'all, they did that in the summer, outside, in Texas, and it was really hot. So they're really happy to be here tonight, and we are thrilled to have them with us here tonight, too. They're under the direction tonight of Johnny Maples from Farrell Elementary, and I know all of your other teachers are here tonight, too. So special shout out to you and all of your kids. We're going to turn it over to you to tell us what you're going to be doing at the Youth Extravaganza.
Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King. He had a dream for America. Martin Luther King. He was a man who wanted justice more than anything. He was a man that died for freedom. Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King. He had a dream for America. Martin Luther King. He was a man who loved his country. Now his name we sing. He was a man who went to the sea with Martin Luther King. Everybody sing Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King. Martin Luther, Martin Luther, Martin Luther King.
Wasn't that tremendous? That just makes my heart happy. All these little people singing, and it makes my heart happy. All right, we will move on to presentation B, and that is our January 2023 Student of the Month from Lamar High School and Principal Andy Hagman. Will you please introduce your student?
President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you for having us tonight. Our student is Austin Palacios. Austin is... He is the exemplar of what you want for a student to be in terms of taking advantage of the opportunity that public education provides. Austin takes all advanced courses. He is in practically every band that we have at Lamar High School, jazz bands, all the way up to the highest band. He is in academic decathlon. Austin, last year, was selected to be our representative for Boys State. He has applied to West Point. And so, this is a guy that he had opportunity in front of him, and he has availed himself of it and is making the most of it. And when you hear what his teachers have to say, here's the best part, is that they just love having him in class because it's not all about chasing the GPA. It's about learning. And his calculus teacher, Mr. Stevens, said, you know, he's the guy that, when he sees the connection between the theoretical and the practical in Calculus BC, that's exciting for him. That's when he livens up. His physics teacher, AP Physics teacher, Ms. Mangat, says that when he gets it and he sees the connection and he has to persevere and really work through it to get it, and then it hits, the light shines, and it's just a light for everyone around. And so, once again, he's just... He's what you want. He's what you want every student to be. Just happy to be there, taking advantage of it, and achieving. So we're very, very proud for him to represent us as the high school student of the month.
Austin, would you like to step forward and thank anyone or tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. All right, well, man, I don't even know what to say.
Would you like to introduce your parents?
Yeah, so I have my mom and dad with me today. So... They've supported me throughout all my life and throughout all my decisions, and they've had to suffer through all the things with band practice and everything. But, um... It was really great to hear about what my teachers had to say about me.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
That was just something I wasn't expecting. But I know, for me, it's true. I do take public education more to my advantage. You know, I've done everything. You know, one year I was in the French club, and then this year I'm in the German club. And it's just like drastic changes. But it's opened a lot of paths throughout my high school career. You know, I mean, last year I did Boys State. I would have never thought I would do something like that. But really, I have to thank all my teachers, too. Everyone, the Lamar staff, Mr. Hagman, everyone. They've helped me throughout this entire time. And that's all I can really say, really.
We are so proud of you. And you know, I love that you said you've taken advantage of the opportunities. And, you know, AISD, that's one of the things we pride ourselves on, is offering all these different opportunities, and many of our students don't take advantage of them. But you have, and you have loved it. And I love your example of, from, you know, all these different languages you've learned and taking advantage of all the opportunities that AISD has for you. So I loved hearing that. And West Point?
Yeah.
Wow. That's awesome, Anthony. All right, may Dr. Cavassos and I come down and give you a little gift?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sure. All right, Anthony. Austin, why do I say Anthony? Austin, so you'll notice that we all have these pins on, right? Everyone has their pin that remembering to wear it. Everyone has their pin. And we would like to give you this and be part of the AISD family forever. You can choose to wear it or put it in a keepsake box, whatever you choose to do. But we don't give these just to everyone. Only to our special people do they get to have one of these pins. So we would like to present you with that pin.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Austin, yeah. So you can come over here. So congratulations. You represent Lamar High School and Arlington ISD exceptionally well, and I am very, very proud of you, and I know you're going to have a bright future. You already have a bright future. So thank you to your parents as well for everything they've done for you. And this is for you also, so you can have this for tonight. And we just appreciate you very, very much. Congratulations.
Now, parents? Yes, Mr. Hagman? Great job. Great job today. All right. Doesn't that make us all proud of a student like that? Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. All right, we are ready for our Martin Luther King Celebration Art and Essay winner. And Mr. Lin Nguyen, I think, is here, too. You'll introduce him.
Lin is here somewhere. So President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos, this weekend, it's going to be huge. We talked about it a little bit earlier. It's the Four Day Advancing the Dream Celebration in honor of Martin Luther King that the city does year over year. Tons of involvement from all of our students across the Arlington ISD, and we're really excited about that. We do have a special guest with us tonight. We have Michael Dupont. Dr. Dupont is the Vice President of Student Affairs at Tarrant County College Southeast Campus, and he's chairman of that 2023 Advancing the Dream Celebration. He's going to come speak to us tonight, and we're going to recognize our art and essay winners for this year's Advancing the Dream Celebration. Over to you, Dr. Dupont.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening. Guten Abend, German comes in very handy. Guten. President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. It's my privilege and honor to serve this year as the chair for the four-day... I'll say the Arlington MLK Martin Luther King Jr. Four Day Celebration. This year, we've really worked very hard alongside with UTA, the City of Arlington, Ministerial Alliance, TCC, and AISD, partnering in one of the biggest celebrations in the nation to honor Dr. King. As part of that celebration, students from AISD serve in many capacities, such as performing as a step show, singing in the ecumenical service, as well as the Youth Extravaganza. And here tonight, as you heard, they've done a beautiful job, and we're very grateful to the partnership with AISD as well as with the staff, the incredible talented staff that you have here. What I would like to do is talk a little bit about the theme this year was our students were challenged with advancing the dream, moving towards unity, justice, and peace. So it is my honor tonight to recognize the amazing art and essay winners. And when I call their name, I'm going to ask the winners to please come forward and come to the front and face the audience. All right? So we'll start with the art winners. In third place, we have Heidi Tong from Sam Houston High School, a 12th grader. Heidi will be a recipient of a $500 scholarship. Second place, we'll have Carolyn Nguyen from Sam Juan Seguin High School, 9th grader. Carolyn will be a recipient of a $750 scholarship. First place will be Kimberly Muro from Sam Houston High School, 11th grader, and she will receive $1,000 scholarship. Thank you. Y'all hold on just a minute. So our essay winners are... In third place, Jordan Smith-Aqua from James Martin High School, 12th grader, will receive a $500 scholarship. Second place, Kalen Dinwiddie, Juan Seguin High School, 12th grader, $750 scholarship. And our first place essay winner is Camille C. from James Martin High School, 12th grader, will receive a $1,000 scholarship. Wonderful talent and creativity that's been displayed this year in all of our contests. I want to give them hearty congratulations and wish you all the best in your future endeavors. I would also like to thank, and if you could stand, Lisa Fields and Lin Nguyen. They were our chairpeople this year. Thank you to both of you. They did an excellent job along with their team. Now, on behalf of the four-day committee, I would like to invite you to any of the four-day events. We have tomorrow, we have a banquet, a gala, that I think many of you will probably attend, so we look forward to seeing you there. Saturday, we have a step show and talent showcase. It actually will be at Bowie High School, so that'll be from 11:00 to 2:00. We hope some of you can stop by for that. We also will have a poetry night that evening at UTA. On Sunday, there'll be a Hubert Moss Ecumenical Service. It'll be at the Cornerstone Baptist Church, and I believe the choir that you heard tonight will also perform there. And then, we're going to finish off on the actual day, on Monday, with the Zeb Strong Jr. Day of Service, where we have volunteers helping in the city of Arlington. We're going to congregate downtown in Mission Arlington area, and then we'll also have a Day of Service Festival near the City Plaza. And we'll end the entire festivities with the Youth Extravaganza, which will be at the Field of Road Baptist Church. So we hope to see you there. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Dr. Dupont. And I love seeing the smiles on their faces when they were called. Such talent in AISD. Thank you, students. We will do school board recognition presentation now. Ms. Foster?
Thank you, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Said that three times tonight. Good at it now. And for all of you, this is really exciting. You may not know, but January is the month across America where we thank school boards for their tireless efforts day in and day out across schools near and far. The theme this year for School Board Appreciation Month is Forward Together. And I can tell you, on behalf of all of us with the Arlington ISD, that represents this school board. We move forward, and we do it together. And we do it on behalf of students because they're the reason we're here every single day, advancing the mission of education. So because it is School Board Recognition Month, Forward Together, our theme, we have students from the district that actually create pieces of art to present to our board members. The school this year that created the art for our school board members, they're from the Wimsh World Language Academy. Jessica Camp is their teacher. They worked with Jessica, Ms. Camp, to make sure that these were amazing works of art that they could present to you to say thank you. I don't know that everybody knows. These are volunteer positions. And so, when members run for election and they join a school board, they do it from the heart because they have the heart for children. So on behalf of all of us, thank you so much, and I hope that you enjoy every minute of School Board Recognition Month. At this time, we'll turn it over to Ms. Camp, and I believe Lin Nguyen is here as well to help present the artwork.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the school board. My name is Jessica Camp, and this is my 10th year being an art teacher and my fourth year in Arlington ISD at the Wimsh World Language Academy. I'd like to say, on behalf of myself, my students, and my school, thank you for all the work that you do to make Arlington ISD an amazing district to work for and to learn in. I speak for my school in saying that we appreciate all the support and hard work you do as our school board. You generously donate your time to meet regularly to make vital decisions that help our district. Everything you do makes a positive impact on Arlington ISD schools and programs, helping to enhance our students' lives and education. The theme this year is Forward Together. Two simple words that, when put side by side, make a very beautiful image. Moving forward in itself can be a very daunting task, though. Putting one step in front of the other involves an awful lot of trust in being able to see what's ahead. But each day, you move our district forward in advancements in education, technology, and outreach. Together, you build the schools and education programs that meet our students' needs. Forward Together is not only a theme, but a description of the hard work you do every day as our school board. Thank you for working together to move us forward. Now, my students and I are honored to have been asked to make this artwork to represent this very big idea of Forward Together. With our school being Wimsh World Language Academy, we incorporated a few of the languages we learn every day. Each student chose the language they wanted to use for their artwork, English, Spanish, or French, representing the theme. My students had an endless supply of laughter and paint splatter while working... Yes, while working on their artwork. And I can honestly say we had a lot of fun working on this art, and I hope that you see it in their final pieces. I am so proud to introduce my students to you. Our first student is Madison. Madison wants to grow up and be a fashion designer. And Madison, can you turn around and show the audience? Our next student is Jackson. He would like to be an artist when he grows up specializing in drawing. All right. Ryan is our next one. He wants to grow up to be a rock star and play electric guitar in a band. Our next one is Liberty. She says that she would like to be an art teacher and an artist. Mila is our next one. Mila is going to be a lot of things and also a teacher when she grows up. Bradley is our next one. He says he would like to be a police officer. Now, one of our students is missing, Arabelle, but my amazing principal, Dr. K, is going to step in. Arabelle's not here, but she wanted to be a veterinarian. And Monty is our last one, and when she grows up, she wants to be an art teacher. Oh, and Monty's artwork is in French. She's on our French track. Thank you, guys.
All right, if y'all stay right there, we'd like to come down and get our picture made with you and get a close-up of our beautiful artwork.
No, she actually won't start until 2024.
(inaudible)
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 And then top 25% of comparative closing the gaps performance. Thirty-three of our campuses earns at earned at least one of these distinction designations. I'm not going to read each of these to you because we had, we have quite a few campuses on each of these distinction designation lists, which is great. I don't want to read them to you since we have so many, so I'll just kind of put the slide up and then pause. For y'all to be able to read. So for our ELA reading distinctions, we had nineteen campuses that were recognized. For the mathematics distinctions, we had eleven campuses that were recognized. For science distinctions, thirteen campuses recognized. For social studies distinctions, six campuses were recognized. This is available at the junior high and high school level, so that's why there's no elementary column. Comparative academic growth distinctions, twenty campuses were recognized. Comparative closing the gaps distinctions, fourteen campuses recognized. And then that last post-secondary readiness distinction, seventeen campuses were recognized. So I'll now move into the student, or excuse me, the district performance section. I'm going to start with our all-subjects. So this is all-subjects at the approaches grade level. And what you see here in that kind of green, well, I guess it's like a dark bluish bar, that very first bar. That is the 2022 percentage. The gray bar is the 21 percentage. That coral teal-blue-ish smaller bar, the third one in on each, on each section, that is the difference from 22, excuse me, from 21 to 22. And then even though nineteen results are not reported on the Tapper report, since, since in previous presentations, comparison to 2019 has been requested. I went ahead and we included that information here. So the yellow is the difference from 2019 to 2022. So all subjects, what you can see is that our difference from 21 to 22, there, that's positive across the board. That's, that's good to report and happy about that. The 22 to 2019 performance, we are still getting towards getting back to 2019 across the all-subjects groups. So when we compile them all together, we're still slightly under where we were for 2019. And I'm optimistic about seeing that increase in 23. So now I'm going to go into just each subject specifically. However, the tables follow the same format, so I don't need to re-explain it each time. So the, for reading at the satisfactory standard, which is the approaches grade level, all of our 22 student groups performed better than they did in 21. And even more than half of our student groups performed better than they did in 2019. Or at, or better than they did in 2019. So for reading, that's fantastic. And looking forward to all, being all-green in, in 23. Moving from performance into growth, our academic growth score for reading, there was no 2020 growth. I mean, there was no 2020 test. And then there was no 2021 growth, since there was no 2020 test. So growth is the 2022 results compared to the 2019 results. And the growth, growth for every single student group increased. So all positives there. That's, and that's what you, that's what you want. Moving from reading into math. Same layout, difference from 2021 to 2022 increases across the board for all the student groups. And similar to this state, we are not quite where we need to be. And still moving towards getting back to the 2019 performance and then, and then obviously hopefully beyond. And so unfortunately, when the comparison to 2019, those are all under. But for math, for the academic growth, predominantly larger values for 2022 than there are for 2019. Moving into science, all increases across the board for 2022 comparing to 2021. And one of our student groups hit in comparing to 2019, but similar to, I'm going to go back to the math academic growth score. Our American Indian and our Pacific Islander group didn't receive higher academic growth in 22 than they did in 2019. Yep, but it's, I wouldn't read too much into it. It's probably small numbers. So the fact that it's negative five and negative six for those groups, it's not concerning. But in the same way, it's not necessarily celebratory worthy to see that nine percent up from 2019 because that's in a small student group, so. And then for social studies, increases for most of the student groups of our 2022 performance compared to our 2021. And, and, and work to be achieved moving up from 2019. And now looking at specifically at our bilingual. So what this chart is showing is all tests of our bilingual students, reading, math, and science. So we didn't break these out into different, into different tables because it's the one student group that we're focusing on. And so what you can see is that our bilingual performance in every single subject increased from 21 to 22. And still room for growth, though, from 2019 to the 2022 results. And for our ESL, increase from 21 to 22 across every subject. And, and then reading, we have an increase from 2019. So that's good. Like to see the others catch up. Moving from performance into participation, we have to meet a test participation of 95% for accountability. And, and are penalized in the domain three category if we don't reach that 95% participation. That was not a concern this last year. The state tested 99% of its students. We tested 99% of our students. And so we match the state with respect to our participation in our assessments. Moving to the attendance rates, attendance rates are slightly different than the performance and participation on the assessment section because this is a year behind. So the attendance that you're seeing is the 2021 attendance compared to the 2020 attendance. Attendance for 2021 was tricky because that was following kind of the, the pandemic. Attendance was odd. There was like some virtual learning happening. And guidelines from the CDC as to having to quarantine and not being able to go to school if you'd been exposed. Things like that, that impacted our attendance rates, or possibly impacted our attendance rates. So, so we are, there are decreases in the 2021 attendance as compared to the 2020 attendance. Moving into the four-year graduation rate, this is also a year behind. And so the graduation rate of our 2021 class is, is that a dark greenish-blue bar? And then the 2020 class is gray. Across the nation, we saw large graduation rates in 2020. And so it's not a surprise to see that our 2021 graduation rates were, were under the, the 2020 graduation rates. And our four-year dropout rate, again, that is our 2021 class compared to our 2020 class. And higher dropout rates in 21 than 20 across various student groups. Nothing, nothing wildly large, this bed group at 4.5%, that difference. You know, certainly something that we want to make sure that we focus on. The five-year graduation rate is the, the 2020 cohort compared to the 2019. And increases in the five-year graduation rate of that 2020 cohort when we compare it to the 2019. And then so not surprising that we would see a decrease in the dropout rates of our 2020 cohort when we compare them to 2019, since the graduation rate was increased. Our CCMR points awarded to our graduates. This shows you the 2021 cohort graduate class compared to the 2020 graduate cohort class. And there are drops in the 2021 performance across many of the student groups with the, the two-race student group being, being higher. That's the only one that's higher than, than the 2020. There are some reasons that we believe might be the reason for the decrease. There was not nearly the amount of opportunities for SAT and ACT because of the pause of the pandemic. Students weren't able to test in those. There were just less opportunities for those 2021 grads to earn that CCMR point. A lot of our students will get that their senior year. And with that senior year, that 2021 year being so odd, unfortunately, there was missed opportunities that we believe led to the decrease. This, this is slightly new, the inclusion of the results-driven accountability. It is a part of our Tapper report. And specifically for the sped portion of RDA, our 2022 determination level did increase by one from 2021. Went from a level four to a level three. There was an increase in reading for our sped students, up one performance level. And then large increases in the year-after-exit special ed students in math, reading, and science. And there, there was decreases. U.S. history was a decrease from last year. And also our dropout rate, unfortunately, a slight increase in that dropout rate, and that dropped us down a level. And our early child, early childhood program rate decreased. And so just areas that, that can still be improved so that we can hopefully move up another level. Moving now into student data, our total students, membership, and not enrollment, but membership, 55,594. The state had 5,402,928. I'm going to, won't read out every single one of these percentages or values. I'll just kind of go through and look at the comparison. So our ethnic distribution, our African-American percentage is 26.6. And much, much higher than the, the states of 12.8. Our Hispanic percentage is 47.5. And just, just a little under the 52.8 for the state. Our white student group is 17%, and that is under the 26.3 for the state. American Indian, Asian, Pacific Islander, and two or more races are very similar to the state. So American Indian being 0.4, Asian student group 5.3%, Pacific Islander 0.2, and then two or more races at 2.9. That's very similar to the state. Our economically disadvantaged is higher than the state. We're at 72.8% for the 2022 school year, and the state came in at 60.7. Research shows the relationship between ECDIS and various factors with educational success. And so that's just always something that we keep an eye on and want to monitor and track appropriately. Emergent bilingual, our percentage is 30.3%, larger than the state's at 21.7%. And then our at-risk is 62.1, which is also larger than the state of 53.5. Various reasons that you can be categorized as at-risk, and we're just slightly higher than, than the state. This is a, a visual form of the tabular information that we just reviewed, just showing the, the ethnic distribution breakdown of, of our students. I'll move into the staff data. Our total staff in AISD in the 2022 year was 7,890. The state had 749,473. We'll move into just the percentage, however, and won't read every value to you. But our teachers make up 49.7% of our staff, very similar to the state where it's 49.3, so just slightly higher. And our central administration is 0.5%, whereas at the state it's 1.2%. So it's slightly more teachers and less central administrators. The students per teacher for AISD is 14.2, and the state's 14.6, so just slightly under the state. Average years of teachers' experience, 11.3 compared to the state of 11.1, so higher there. Average years' experience of teachers within the district is eight compared to the state, which is 7.2. So nice to be higher on those two, even if it's light. And our instructional staff percentage is 66% compared to the state's 64.9. Moving into operating expenditure values, our total operating expenditure per student is $10,821. And the state's 11,106, so about 300 under the, the state. The areas we usually focus on, on our instruction and then the general administration, there's kind of ups and downs between the different, the different categories for operating expenditures. But for instruction, outspending the state just by about $100 per student, $6,443 compared to the state's 6,358. And then our general administration, only 214 as compared to the state's 361. And then this slide is the same information, it's just instead of the value, it's the percentage. So you can see that our instruction, 59.5% compared to the state's 57.2. And then that same line that we looked at for the general administration, it's 2% compared to 3.3% for the state. And then moving on to our financial data, our instructional expenditure ratio is 68% for AISD compared to the state's 64.2. And then the unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of the budget is 28.9% compared to the state's 27.5%. Any questions related to the financial aspect, though, should definitely be answered by Ms. Moss. I'm just presenting the, the numbers. And then there are links to the 2122 Tapper. And then the financial data is a year behind, similar to the attendance and the graduation rate data. And so that's the link for that is for the 2021 financial data. And that is all I, I have. I will pause and answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez. Do we have any trustees that have questions or comments? Ms. Benjamin, are there any registered speakers?
Not for this portion of the meeting, the public hearing, no ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. Anyone with questions or comments? It's not. Ms. McMurrough?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. Can we go back to the slide? All-subject satisfactory standard, it was, I think it was the first bar graph we saw.
Yes, ma'am.
I always do that to you guys. I'm so sorry. So to me, this big-picture data, and I do appreciate you weaving in the 2019. To me, this is evidence that we are absolutely bouncing back and closing the COVID gap, wouldn't you say?
I mean, it, yeah, yes.
And I, I mean, my heart leaps when I see this slide, and it's just, it is, I, I don't know what other evidence could show you how hard our students, our teachers, everyone in the district is working, and it's paying off. And I think that, you know, across the board, you see that, not just with our student populations, but with our content areas. And I just, man, my hat's off to everyone for their hard work. And this is my favorite slide of the whole presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurrough.
Dr. Raich?
Thank you, President Fowler, and Dr. Lopez, thank you for the information. Yeah, we're doing great things in this district. The, the only thing that I wanted to say is, if anybody is wondering why there's not a lot of questioning and analysis as trustees, is this isn't the first time we've seen this.
Right.
We've had this presented in numerous fashions over many different meetings. So I just want to let anybody that is maybe tuning in for the first time, that, man, this, this board is checked out. No, we've had hours and hours and hours of discussion on it. This is just the formal reporting process that we have to go through. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, this, this report definitely is, feels delayed. We've definitely reviewed this.
Any other trustees with comments? Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. Oh, thank you. The public hearing is now closed. We now come to our open forum for agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have anyone requested?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Fedra Castaneda Lara registered to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Benjamin.
Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavazos. My name is Fedra Castaneda Lara. I am the president of the United Education Association here in Arlington. And as we heard early this evening, January is Board Appreciation Month. And this year, as we heard this evening, the theme is Forward Together. And I get to see you guys quite often as I, I'm present for the meetings. And I do want to thank you for all the hard work that you do, being here and taking the hours that you take away from your family and be here and make decisions that are good for everyone, especially for our students and our teachers and staffs. So we really do appreciate all the hard work. And like I mentioned this evening, the hours that you do are volunteer hours. And it takes an effort, it takes a heart for you to be here, to take decisions that affect every single student in our district, teachers and support staff, administrators that work towards what's best for students. So I do have the, the time to thank you. And please make sure that keeping forward, you make the best decisions for students and for teachers and for our staff that are working along to meet every student's need in our district. Thank you. And have a great evening.
Thank you so very much. It's, we appreciate you appreciating us. So thank you so much. That was very kind. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters that have, that want to address anyone on the board regarding agenda items? That was the only one? Thank you, Ms. Benjamin. We now move on to action item A, consider order of election for school board.
Thank you, President Fowler. And at this time, it would be appropriate to call for a motion and then read the order after the vote.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Do I have a motion to accept the calendar? Order of elections? I'm jumping ahead. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. McMurrough. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. Thank you. All right, big breath. Bear with me. A general election is hereby ordered to be held Saturday, May 6, 2023, for the purpose of elected members to the Board of Trustees of the Arlington Independent School District to fill place numbers six and seven. The main early voting police polling site for all voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District, including the portion of the district that lies within the city of Arlington, the city of Dow Worthington Gardens, the Tarrant County portion of the city of Grand Prairie, and the town of Pantigo, will be the following location. Tarrant County Election Center, 2700 Premier Street, Fort Worth, Texas, 76111. Between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, beginning at April 24, 2023, through April 28, 2023. Between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 29, 2023. Between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, April 30, 2023. And between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on Monday and Tuesday, May 1 and May 2, 2023. Applications for a ballot by mail for voters residing in the Arlington Independent School District shall be mailed to or faxed early voting clerk, P.O. Box 961011, Fort Worth, Texas, 761610011. Fax number 817-850-2344. Or an email transmission of a completed scanned application for a ballot by mail containing an original signature may be mailed to votebymail@terrentcounty.com. Note, effective December 1, 2017, if an application to ballot by, ballot by mail is submitted by fax or email, the original application must also be mailed and received by the early voting clerk no later than the fourth business day after receipt of the faxed or emailed copy. Applications for a ballot by mail must be received no later than the close of business on Tuesday, April 25, 2023. The order of election must, may be amended at a later date to include early voting sites added or deleted due to joint elections or other political subdivisions issued this 12th day of January, 2023. Action item A, we are now going to consider the order of election for school board. Do I have a motion? Well, that's what I thought we were ready for. All right, action B.
Thank you, President Fowler. And at this time, we'd like to present the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar. The, the administration, Dr. Hill, has led an effort with the calendar committee, a robust effort, I should say. They've had multiple meetings and then another one even after the multiple meetings. And so they, they've done great work. So I want to thank the calendar committee upfront for your input and commitment. Really, really appreciate it. A calendar is a really important part of our district. And everybody waits for when it's adopted, so maybe tonight's the night. So, Dr. Hill, thank you for your work and lead us through this presentation, please.
Absolutely. So, evening, board, President Fowler, members of the board, Superintendent Cavazos. Again, we're here to kind of go through the calendar committee process, the meetings, and all that we've done. And ended up with the final recommendation. But again, I'd like to start with the recognizing of the committee and those that are here today. We really sincerely appreciate your efforts. Again, all volunteer work. And it's very important work as we lead through this process. So again, I wanted to recognize those that were on that committee, students, parents, teachers, staff, and others. So again, the calendar development process included, we talked about the purpose of the committee, went through the timeline, which we'll show to you. We talked about the rules and the laws, which kind of restrict a little bit of what we are actually allowed to do with the calendar. We discussed some recommendations, and then we actually brought, at a previous meeting, a draft calendar for consideration. Again, we talked about the purpose, again, was to focus on an academic calendar that focuses on student outcomes while aligning with state laws and considers impact on staff and the greater community. So you try to do all of that in one, and with the limitations placed on the, by the, the laws, it's, it's a challenge. So we started the process back in November with the application being posted online. And we've had, again, two, two meetings, a couple of governance committee meetings. And here we are today on the 12th with the recommendation. The ballpark that we had to play with then, so to speak, requires that the calendar have 75,600 minutes. Again, that was back from that House Bill 2610. Then we had to have additional minutes to cover emergency closures and things like that, unforeseen closures of schools. It requires that the teacher contract still have 187 days in that contract. It requires that the first day of school not be prior to the Fourth Monday in August. But because we're a district of innovation, we, we, we have that exception, and the calendar allows for that. Last day of school cannot be prior to May 15. It requires we have ballot, no, I'm sorry, we, we, we try to have balanced semesters, and we try to end semester one prior to January. And we want to try to align with UTA and TCC because of our partnerships with our students and staff in those programs. Some of the discussions and recommendations from the committee, we started with the, the starting the school in the middle of the week, in August, to try to transition into the week. And then we also had some discussions about school safety. And then we also had some discussions about school safety with some concerns around Election Day, and the recommendation moved that October Exchange Day to the November 7 Election Day. This is a draft of the calendar, and you all can see that in your packet a little bit more, in a more detail. But I did wanted to show that we did go ahead and put all of that into this draft to kind of show what it looks like on the true calendar. And in that drafting, it includes seven teacher/staff prep days in August prior to school starting, two staff development days, one in November, one in April, two teacher prep days, one at the beginning of each, I'm sorry, one in January and one in May, the full week for Thanksgiving, the two weeks for winter break, spring break, again, that's second full week in March. The last day of school for students would be May 24. Again, there are two staff development/exchange days in May, and the teacher contract days are 187, which is aligned with the law. There are 174 instructional days broken up into the two semesters, which gives us a 76,610 operational minutes, which meet the requirement of House Bill 2610. The Board Governance Committee wanted us to go back to the Calendar Committee to discuss potential impact of the Election Day and the closing for all schools on that day, requires the parents and others to have some adjustments if we were to close on that day, and then some impact around winter break, having some additional time prior to Christmas when we actually broke for the winter break. So we took that information back to the Governance Committee, and I'm sorry, back to the Calendar Committee. And I'll tell you, that meeting was, we spent a lot, I hear them giggling back there. And we spent a lot of time in that meeting, really culling through what the Board Governance Committee and the Board ultimately wanted us to consider. And ultimately, after probably hour and a half, close to two hours of discussion, the committee actually landed on, we just couldn't find a way to move these things around, or they were just that critical of importance to the committee that they wanted the Board to consider. The initial recommendation of the closing on Election Day and leaving the winter break the way it was. Some of the things that we considered prior to coming back with the final recommendation, it just, we just couldn't find a place to land where it wouldn't impact something else in such a drastic way that it was almost worth it. We talked about things like not having the full day, week for Thanksgiving. We talked about some other considerations, but ultimately, it was that we wanted to just leave it the way that the initial recommendation was. And so, all that being said, the calendar as recommended by the committee to the administration, and we've had another governance committee meeting, is presented for you for your consideration, and it is the initial one that was recommended. So, that being said, I definitely open up for any questions or discussion you may have about the recommendation.
Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Hill, thanks for the presentation, and we were part of the group that went back and forth quite a bit on the Governance Committee. I just wanted to make clear, because of some of the notes in your slides, the concern for Election Day is based in safety, but there is not a history that you know of, of any security breaches or anything like that on Election Days prior to now, right?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay. So this isn't a response to an actual security threat that has occurred on a campus during an election?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make clear that that's the case, and also that we were providing additional security on, at polling sites on Election Days in the past, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And this is just going forward, because I understand the concern, especially in 2024 with a big presidential election coming up, that that, you know, that magnitude of people on our campuses is going to be different. And so, you know, I'm supportive of moving a year earlier and get folks acclimated to having Election Day off, and also, I think it's a good thing for civic involvement, for folks to, you know, if they want to go vote on Election Day, our employees now have the ability to go do that, take their students along, if they'd like to as well. So, thanks.
Absolutely. Yes.
Dr. Reisch.
Thank you, President Fowler, and Dr. Hill for the presentation, and to the committee, thank you so much for all of the work. It is valuable. Regarding the Election Day situation, I completely understand, you know, there's other districts that let out and did that. The political climate in this country is scary, and the situations that we hear, horrible incidents in our campuses around the country are scary, and we don't want that to happen in Arlington ISD. So it does absolutely make sense that this was an issue that the committee took with, you know, a great level of seriousness regarding student safety, just keep people off the campus. That's ultimately what we try to do, except for those that are directly involved in the business of the campus. So I absolutely support the recommendation. I don't like it. I think it is a disruption for all of our students to lose that instructional time, but it is, it's a matter of where we are. And what I would submit to this governing body is that we work with our county government, with our commissioners and our county judge to move forward on the elimination of using school sites as election facilities. That might be a great strain, and it might be difficult, but what is better than preserving potentially the lives of our students and our staff? So I really think that that's where we should probably pursue this going forward, so that we don't have to have a day off on Election Day in the future. So, that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Fowler. That's exactly what I was going to follow up and say, is that this also is not a decision that we make unilaterally to have polling sites. That's a decision that's made for us. And so I'm glad Dr. Reisch brought up that point. And I do think, to Dr. Reisch's point, it's really sad, because I can remember, you know, as a child, we lived near a polling site in East Arlington, and I used to walk with my grandpa to go vote at a school. And, you know, and I think that set, you know, that did something for me. And then the schools that I went to growing up were also polling sites, and seeing people come in and go to the bowling ball, you know, the ballot boxes, and that was sort of a special thing. And unfortunately, it seems like we're at a point where the concerns for civic engagement and education are being overridden by safety. And I, you know, we can talk about the reasons for that, but as Dr. Reisch said, I think, unfortunately, that's where we are. And, but yes, going forward, we should definitely work with the powers that be to where this is not, you know, it is a, even though we will not have, if this calendar is approved, students will not have to be on campus on Election Day last year, we are still going to have to find folks to staff the 29 or 30 schools that are polling sites. So it's not like we're completely going to be out of business. We still need staff to fill the buildings those days, too. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hibbs.
Mr. Chapa, since this is coming from your committee, would you like to make the motion to move this forward? No, I'm deferring to you. President Fowler, I move that we accept the calendar as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. We have a motion for Mr. Hibbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Ms. McMurro. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll move for consent.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Mays. Y'all, I'm just...
That's Ms. Mays.
Mrs. Mays. We have a motion for Mr. Hibbs and a second for Mrs. Mays. Should I just go home? Should I just? Y'all, I'm sorry. Apparently, I'm just very tired today. All right. We ready for discussion A? Oh, y'all, I'm just... Motion carries. Thank you. Now, let's see if I can get something right. We now move to discussion A, Texas School Safety Center Campus Intruder Detection Audits.
Thank you, President Fowler. And this evening, we bring a brief presentation, as we have before, regarding our intruder audits that are occurring. We bring this just as an informational item, so, Dr. Hill.
Yeah, school safety has been a priority of the district and the boards, and we appreciate that, and we kind of want to update you all on a regular basis to kind of, when there's information to share about school safety. So we're just going to talk a little bit about the intruder detection audit as required by the state and the Texas School Safety Center. We always try to put school safety in perspective and just show all the things that we do for school safety, and then just show the additional layer of the intruder detection audit. It's just one part of the many layers of school safety and security that we have. This is coming from the governance charge, which is issued on June 1, 2022, mandated in-person, unannounced, random intruder detection audits of schools. The Texas School Safety Center is contracted with Region 11 to conduct these audits, and the timeline, again, was from September of 2022, and they'll go through May. Inspectors are trained by the Texas School Safety Center and the Region Service Center, and the audits are conducted and the results are sent to the Texas School Safety. And if and when there are findings, they are reported back to the superintendent for a corrective action, if one is necessary. The audits come in three phases. The phase one is a solo, where the auditor is by him or herself, and they're doing exterior door checks and the process for visitor requirements in the office. Phase two, they are actually escorted with a staff member, and they're doing exterior door checks, as well as checking the weekly door check log, which is required by every campus every week. They have to check every exterior door and log that, and so the auditor is actually looking for that log as a part of the audit as well. And then phase three, they're escorted as well, and they're doing interior door checks, random, not every door, but a random, to see if they're actually meeting what we are, have defined as our standard. Again, these audits are, after the audit is conducted on the campus, they're received within five business days from the School Safety Center. It's an email to the superintendent, and it includes all the detailed information about the site visit. And if there's necessary for a corrective action plan, we're notified, and we share that with the appropriate departments and campuses, and provide those campuses with the additional supports. Again, when there are findings, there is a requirement of a corrective action plan that includes presenting to the board, training the staff, and the convening of the district's safety committee. And so we do that when it's appropriate. So, that being said, just a brief update, and I wanted to see if you had any questions about it, or any comments that you wanted to share.
Any trustees with questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you so much, Dr. Hill. We appreciate the information.
You bet. Thank you.
We will now have a 2019 bond program update.
Thank you, President Fowler. And tonight, we bring, as an information item, a bond update. We bring this on a regular basis, just to give us status of where our bond is and really the big picture around our bond, as it is continuing to make big difference in our school district. So Kelly Horn will present information related to our bond.
Thank you. Good evening, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. So I'll make a brief update this evening on the status of the bond program. Pardon me just a moment. And as always, this first slide just gives us, and God bless you, just gives us an idea of how the bond dollars are broken down by the various areas, facilities, fine arts, the technology, safety and security portion, and the transportation portion. And then through phase three, at this point, this is how our dollars are broken down. You can see in the budget column, that represents the amount of funds that have been, that have been set aside at this point, and for our various construction projects. And so, and then, of course, in the encumbered column, you all understand that that's money that we've committed to projects at this point. And then the expended column, that money which we've spent to date. And then finally, the available amount of money that's left within the budget dollars that were set aside for the first three phases. And then down at the bottom, what I call below the line, you have our bond issuance cost, and then our interest earnings to date, that and additional proceeds. So the total available funds as of today, or as of last week, are $384,22,823. Then we, this slide just gives you an idea of just the facilities dollars and how those are broken out. You can see at the top, of course, how we break down or how we plan to spend the money for facilities across all five phases, and then the total amount at the far right. We provide the chart, obviously, the pie chart, just visually, to kind of give you an idea of how much we've expended to date and what's available. In short order, you'll see projects such as the second phase or the GMP 2 for Arlington High School, Fine Arts, and Dual Language Academy. The Carter Junior High School project, or Replacement School project, will come onboard. Those are big dollar projects, and that available amount of money will be spent down, or will be expended or encumbered, I should say, rather quickly. This particular slide just kind of shows you, as we go along, how our projects in process are growing. We're now at 56 projects in some phase of planning or closeout. And so the large number in planning there at 19 represents what you'll see in a bit in our phase four projects. In our phase one projects, you can see there, we still have two projects that are in the bidding phase. We have Berry and the Thornton Elementary School, replacement schools, that are still in construction, but quickly coming to a close. Just to give you an idea, we plan to have those two schools open in August. We plan to finish them though in April. That gives us time to move in furniture in May, and then be ready so that when the teachers that are at the temporary Thornton and temporary Berry are packing their items at the end of the school year, they, we can just move them over into the new school, have them there waiting for them. And then all summer, we have time for the principal to get in with her staff or his staff and make the schools ready, and be ready for the teachers to come and set up those first few days in August. So those projects are going great, and I'm going to show you kind of some fun slides here next. You, I thought it would be interesting to show you what we decided upon when we rendered the schools, and then kind of what they look like today, or how they're turning out. And so that particular rendering was of our John Webb Elementary. And really excited to say, obviously, you know by now that we opened that for the first day of school at the new web this first day of the semester, and that was an exciting time. I saw tears. I saw lots of smiles. And one teacher told us, Dr. Cavassos and I, she was coming into the school, and she was just crying, and it was about 6:45 in the morning. And I said, why are you crying, you know? And she said, I've waited 27 years for this. I've been here. She said, I think I'm going to postpone retirement now. So it's really exciting to see that kind of excitement for a school opening. But that's what the school looks like today. So you can see what we planned in the rendering transferred very well into reality. And it'll look a little better when the trees put leaves on again, right? But we did save all the big trees around that campus, and over to the far left of the school there, there's some big beautiful pecans that will leaf out in the spring and be awesome. Then we have our Berry Elementary rendering, and so I'll jump straight over to where we are. A little rougher. We're not quite... We're not quite there yet, but you can kind of see it's starting to really look like the rendering. So they are, like I said, we're about three to four months at this point, roughly 90 to 120 days from finishing. It's, you know, they're starting to put finishes in the building, tile in the bathrooms and flooring in certain areas. So it's really coming along well. And then we have our Thornton Elementary School rendering. And this particular rendering, if you remember, Corrigan is our architect here. And this is what the school looks like today. So aside from the big storage container in the front, if that wasn't there, I promise you, it really does look like the rendering already. So a lot of fun to see these come together. And it's really exciting to see that we built these schools, just like so many of our other facilities, in and around the existing landscape. So they really have a neat feel when you go to them, and it just feels like the school, while it's new, it's kind of like it's been there for a long time because we didn't get rid of those big, beautiful trees. So our phase two, these projects, while we have quite a few of these projects in bidding, if you recall, during the realignment portion of the bond that we just took the last eight to nine months working through, we postponed project bidding on some things until we worked through that. These projects are all going to start to come to you relatively quickly for approval. Probably the first few we'll see will be Adams and Hale, and then Duff and South Davis. And then the bottom three, Atherton, Foster and Johns, and then finally the Sam Houston project. And then this picture is a recent, last week picture of what it looks like today at Arlington High School for the Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy. For me, that's pretty exciting. It's just moving a lot of dirt right now. But what you don't see is the part of the building that we demolished. So they've completely removed the sections of the building that we're going to get rid of. And now that they're ready, we'll start to see concrete come in. We'll start to see steel going up, and that will, it'll take a while. This is a big project, and it's very complex, but it'll start to really pop. That corner's going to change a lot as you drive by daily. And then, again, probably my most favorite part of the project, I love the playgrounds as we open those up. This one is at Wimbush. This is the phase two, this is part of the phase two project. And I won't gloss over phase three. I don't have a slide on it. But phase three, remember, we bought all the equipment. We're in the process of finalizing the bid package for the concrete, and we'll bring that to you in short order. And while we're doing that, we're wrapping up quickly the phase two playgrounds. And so as we finish those, that's kind of why we're doing the concrete package that we were doing it. We want to bid that and have that ready to be bought immediately so that we don't have inflation hit us in the concrete prices. So it's a timing thing. So we'll bring that to you and then immediately turn out and start putting concrete down for phase three. And then, of course, we have the equipment, so it's going to go really quick. So I imagine by the time we get through the summer, we'll have all the playgrounds in place at that point. And then our phase three projects, most notable here is the Carter project. While the others are still in the last phases of their design, and they'll be being bid later in the spring, our Carter project, our Carter Junior High School replacement project, will be bid here in just the next 30 to 45 days. Actually, on January 24th, the city council will be making its first reading of that project. It's been through the plan development process with P&amp;Z at this point, so we're moving along quickly there. And then, of course, I mentioned the playground replacements in phase three is in construction as well. And then all of our phase four projects have, these have moved from pending to planning now. So we, you approved the architects back in December, and we're working with those architects now to begin this process of getting these schools online for design and then finally into construction, bidding and construction as well. Our phase five projects are still pending. We'll look at those again this time next year with you. And then our hub numbers for phases one through three, I'll point out that, you know, when I was here last, we were at just above 30%. That's dropped. We're still above 25%, but the biggest reason is we have some very large projects like the Arlington High School Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, where we've infused big dollars for those projects. And until they get deeper in the projects and we start spending that money, the number drops a bit. But it's kind of like the bond program, you know? It just kind of, it's up and down, up and down. But we still have a trajectory to be, well, we'd like to be above 25% when we finish. And then finally, just a couple of slides on those other programs, just to kind of keep you in tune with where they're at. You can see that 65% of the dollars have been expended for fine arts so far. They're moving into their phase three or their year three. I call it year three here because they generally spend their money by the year versus in construction. Our phases may be over two- or three-year periods. So they've spent 65% of their money and still have 17% available. And then in technology, again, they've expended 61% of their funds through year three at this point with 26% available. And then finally, transportation, again, all of them roughly at 60%. This one, 59% with 32% available. In transportation, obviously, it's buying buses. So their money will move from encumbered to expended very quickly and likewise when the buses arrive. So at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you this evening.
Do I have any trustees with questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Horn. And I want to remind people that back when the pandemic was hitting and construction things were hard to come by and costs were rising, you had a super secret warehouse that none of us even know where it was, but where you had supplies and, most important, the playground equipment. So we didn't, we weren't hit with the added expense when all the costs went up. So thank you for your super secret warehouse.
Yeah.
I know.
Well, I'll just tell you, the manufacturer stepped up and didn't cost us anything to store it, and they kept it for us, and they're a very good vendor for us, and we're very thankful for their help. So it saved us a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. We appreciate you.
You bet.
Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Horn, for the update as always and the tremendous work that you and your department does in implementing such a large bond in such strenuous times with the market conditions, all the things that go into the market conditions right now. We don't have to sit here and list probably about five or eight things that are causing you great angst. So with that, I just say thank you very much. With, yes, there's adjustments and overruns here and there, but overall, I think at the end of this, we're still going to be very close. And that is a testimony to you and your staff and this district, putting in all the hard work and the considerations in these trying times, these challenging times, to keep things on time and on budget. And just a remark on the Barry and Thornton Elementaries, what a fantastic situation. All my years on the board, we've never had that situation.
Right.
Where the teachers and the staff, the principal can be ready, absolutely ready, day one, already there. That's wonderful. And a new leaf for previous experience in the district.
Right.
So thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, thank you. And I really have to say that, you know, in addition to the team that works with me that out of facilities, the finance team, you know, here that I work with at the building is amazing. Carla and Darla, their entire team, there's a lot of work that goes into managing the bond dollars, and they do a tremendous amount to help me, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Ms. Mays?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just really, very quickly want to say just thank you again to the public because all of the planning came from our committees made up of the public. The board and administration went out and wanted to be as transparent as possible as we were trying to pass the bond. And it is just very heartwarming when I get to sit back and see the fruits of all the labor from an idea to something that has actually happened and into fruition and see the smiles on the children's faces and the teachers' faces. But I just really just want to say, because I truly mean it, just very grateful for the opportunity of the trust from the public to allow us to do these things that are definitely, I believe, making AISD a better school district and helping our students to succeed and hopefully making our teachers feel like they have resources and places that they need to have. So that's just my comment.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Anyone? Thank you so much, Mr. Horn.
Yes, thank you all very much.
We appreciate it. It is now time for the superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Fowler. And this is a brief report. I'd like to share some information. I'd like to start by, with a huge congratulations to Arlington High School, and you'll see graduate there, Isaac James. Isaac was recently selected as a member of the American Rhodes Scholar, class of 2023. Out of more than 800 applicants, Isaac was one of 32 Americans selected to study at Oxford and only one of two from Texas. It's a huge honor for Isaac and a big one for our school district as well. Isaac went to or attended Duff Elementary and Bailey Junior High before going to Arlington High School, where he was very involved in many, many clubs. Isaac graduated from the University of Texas last May. So congratulations to Isaac and everyone that affected his life. On the subject of congratulations, I want to say a couple of words about two more Arlington AISD graduates, Griffin Kell and Isaac, who, like Isaac, went to Duff, Bailey and Arlington High, and Saginaw School graduate Quentin Harris, who were both in the national spotlight earlier this week. Both are members of the TCU football program that played the national championship Monday against Georgia. And while the results didn't quite go the way we all wanted them to, they're both outstanding, outstanding representatives of Arlington AISD, and I'm just so proud of them and every teacher and coach and principal that had anything to do with influencing those two young men. A little bit more congratulations saved one more time, Mr. Hibbs?
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. I knew somebody would say it. All right. This time, I want to congratulate an entire school, as Mr. Horn has already mentioned. I want to commend everyone at Webb Elementary for their outstanding work in making last week's transition to the brand-new web go so, so smoothly. I know it took a lot of work. It took a lot of work before the winter break, some work over the winter break, and some more work during that week, and still some more work. But last Wednesday's first day was great. I was fortunate to be at the school when the doors opened for students for the first time. They, as well as the teachers and staff, were very excited about going to the new web elementary. Several students insisted that we, they shared with me not to knock down the old web. So I said, well, we'll talk about that later. You enjoy your new web first. And so they were so happy, and you can just see them, and I'm just so proud. And I know we have at least one teacher here from Webb Elementary, so thank you so much. You guys are outstanding, and it's just amazing to be able to be there and the kids walk in, just walking taller and prouder because they're in this wonderful facility. Like Ms. Mays said, thank you to our voters, and thank you to our staff and our teachers and principals, everyone who does this. Congratulations. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Do I have any trustees with reports? None?
Thank you, President Fowler. I just want to reiterate this weekend of great events with the City of Arlington, with TCC, with UT Arlington, and with the school district, all the celebrations for Martin Luther King Weekend. Come and see our students. Come and just be involved in all of the fun for the event Friday through Monday, four days. You've got four opportunities to come out and be a part of advancing the dream for our four-day celebration. And the thing which I love is moving towards unity, justice, and peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Any other comments? All right. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you. They got did it again. Ms. Secretary? While I'm looking, Ms. Secretary, do we have any? Ms. Secretary, do you have anything to report?
At this time, President Fowler, there are no reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurra. The Board of Trustees, on January 12th, 2023, beginning at 8:24, will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 and 551.089 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will not be returning. Thank you.